Good morning. We are here for our regular scheduled county commissioner meeting. It is November twenty-sixth. We have our administrator, Mr. Danzel, our clerk of the board, and a full slate of commissioners. And at this time, I'll call the meeting to order and ask everybody to please rise and join in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So at this time, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Move for approval of agenda as presented.
Second, with a proposed amendment, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I see our Franklin County chaplain's in the room. And as we have Thanksgiving tomorrow, I would love to invite our chaplain to come forward and offer a prayer of Thanksgiving for us, if you're willing.
Yes, and then we'll vote on the agenda. Absolutely, would love to have him come forward and be thanked. We all need to be thankful for what we have.
Well, if you're of another faith, I'm a Christian, I pray in Jesus. Praying that. The Lord Father, who has come to you on this day, we want to thank you for allowing us to be here. We thank you for allowing us to just walk in your steps, to be able to stand here. Each one of these men and women here. Thank you for the commissioners here, for all the work that they do and what they allow us just to be citizens, watching over us. What do we ask for Thanksgiving? Our leaders. Honor you in all that we do. Lessons you've given us.
Amen.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think we do need to vote on our agenda.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Moves us down to public comment. Anybody in the room for public comment? Is there anybody on the phone? Nobody on the phone, nobody coming forward. We'll move down to the approval of the consent agenda. I believe there are nine items on the consent agenda.
Move for approval of consent agenda items one through nine as presented.
I would like to ask that we pull item number three for this week and potentially move it to next week. And the reason I would like to see that is, I don't know this gentleman. And I don't know if I'm for or against, I just have no measurement or any idea. And I feel like that we should have a, we should know something about somebody when we appoint somebody to something. And so, love to hear a thought on there, but maybe pull that and have an opportunity to get to know who this is.
And I agree wholeheartedly because the libraries are very influential to the kids. And we know what's transpiring at those at this time. So, I'm in favor of this. There has not been a second to the motion, so I'll entertain a new motion.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we would pull item number three from consent and approve items one, two, and four through seven, or four through nine as presented.
Second.
Has been a motion and a second for approval of consent items one, two, four through nine. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Takes us down to regular business. Presentation, letter to Washington State Patrol about the Federal Highway three ninety-five. And we just had another terrible accident yesterday. And I know the person, and he was elected to office in Clotus. So, yes, we need to do something.
Did you want me to read the letter?
Yes, please. Mr. Danzel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And speaking with the board, you'd asked me to read this letter. So, right here it is. This is addressed to Colonel John Patis, the chief of the Washington State Patrol, the head of the Department of Transportation, and our regional office for the Federal Highway Administration. This will be also routed to Congressman Newhouse, Congressman Baumgartner, Senators Cantwell and Murray, and all other, all of our local area legislators that represent the area in Olympia. Colonel Patis, Secretary Millar, and the Federal Highway Administration, Washington Division leadership, on behalf of the citizens of Franklin County, we are writing to express profound and urgent safety concerns regarding the deteriorating conditions and alarming rate of serious incidents on U.S. Route three ninety-five near Pasco, just outside of King City. The concern is heightened by a tragic string of recent events, including a fatal accident on U.S. three ninety-five near Crestlock Road intersection last week, in addition to another fatal accident on U.S. three ninety-five near the Vineyard Road intersection this week. This critical stretch of highway faces a complex and highly dangerous combination of factors. Number one, high-speed freight traffic. A significant volume of commercial freight trucks travel this corridor at the current seventy miles per hour speed limit, creating severe speed differentials with other traffic. Heavy commute congestion. The highway serves as a major commuting route, leading to high traffic volumes and frequent driver impatience, especially during peak hours. Agricultural presence. This area is heavily utilized agricultural corridor, involving the frequent and necessary movement of large, slow-moving farming machinery across and along the highway. And number four, a string of recent accidents. We have seen a distressing string of recent severe accidents at and around the Crestlock Road intersection, serving as tragic evidence that the current configuration is inadequate for the existing traffic mix and speed. With these conditions, the Franklin County Commissioners firmly believe it is no longer a question of if a major potentially fatal incident will occur, but when. We must act decisively now to prevent further loss of life and property. To immediately address this unacceptable risk, we respectfully request the following actions from your respective agencies. Number one, enhanced law enforcement and visibility. We request the dedication of high-visibility emphasis patrols along the relevant stretch of U.S. three ninety-five and the Crestlock intersection to enforce the current speed limit, address distracted driving, and manage traffic flow, particularly during commute and agricultural movement periods. Number two, engineering traffic and traffic management review. We urge WASDOT to conduct an immediate comprehensive traffic and engineering study focused on incident prevention. This study should evaluate and recommend studying and possibly reducing the speed limit in the vicinity of these high-risk intersections, installing improved signage for high-risk intersections, including advanced warning of agricultural crossings, considering intersection modifications such as dedicated turn lane or other access management solutions suitable for the volume of speed and traffic. Number three, dedicated safety funding and partnership. We ask that the Federal Highway Administration and WASDOT identify and dedicate any available safety funding, including federal programs such as the Highway Safety Improvement Program, specifically to fast-track safety improvements on this segment of U.S. three ninety-five. Franklin County is committed to working with our state and federal partners in any capacity, including assistance with data collection, traffic control, planning, and community outreach to implement lasting changes. The safety of our citizens, motorists, farmers, school buses, and drivers, as well as commercial truck drivers who depend on this route, is our absolute highest priority. We await your prompt response and look forward to collaboratively resolving this critical public safety issue.
Well done. And it does say, "U.S. Route near Pasco, outside of King City." I'm not sure if everybody knows where King City is. Is it even noted as a city?
It's not, it's a part of Pasco.
Yeah. So, it does say north of Pasco, so they know where we're talking about. Commissioners, anything you want to add to this or comment on?
I was meeting with our administrator yesterday in preparation for this meeting and doing a pre-agenda meeting. And that accident had just happened. And I had made a comment to Brian that, you know, it was a terrible accident. I found out that it was a fatality. I've got lots of family that travel that road. And just shortly after it happened, my nephew told me that there was a fatality accident there. And I commented to our administrator that, I said, "It's very likely that I'm going to know somebody that was in that accident." And that turned out to be true. One of our council members in Franklin County lost their lives yesterday in that accident. The stretcher road. If you look at the highways in Franklin County, Highway twelve, right by the Snake River Bridge, a man about four months ago lost his life at that intersection, sixty-year-old farmer up out of Prescott, lost his life at that intersection. We've had numerous fatalities over the years of, at almost all of these different intersections. I can't think of a recent fatality at Sage Moore, but these other intersections, we have we have constant wrecks and the fatalities are, it's just not acceptable. And Mr. Robitell lost his life at that intersection yesterday. And a question that I would have, that I don't know the answer to, is there a way that we could declare a state of emergency as a county for a state highway to try to prompt or speed up processes? I just don't know the answer to it. Would you have?
But this is a federal highway, Thomas-Foley Highway. We do have a state highway, seventeen, through our county also is the deadliest road
Same type of thing.
in the state of Washington. So, we have a pair of these. And there's avenues to combat this, and it's been done on Highway ninety, and that is overpasses or frontage roads. And I think we should be looking into both. You know, the frontage road, either way, it's going to be a lot of money. But lives are worth more than money.
I see that our Conal Police Chief is in the room. I know that he travels this road regularly. Mr. Chairman, if you're willing, I'd love to ask him if he would...
Mr. Lee, would you like to come forward and speak on this?
I don't know what more I can add. Yeah, I appreciate your efforts and everything that you're doing because it's got to, something's got to happen. Something's got to change. Foster Wells all the way up north. I jokingly call three ninety-five the Autobahn because I drive it back and forth and people blow my doors off. Keep it on the market constantly. There's no shortage of speed, no shortage of driving on the shoulders, all of the place. We've got to do something, and we've got to look at it in a holistic effort. I can just imagine, I see it comes from... And there we go. I didn't think I could hear myself echo. And I see a lot of activity that comes from Karchner and Foster Wells going northbound as frustrations from the interchange from three ninety-five, Highway twelve, and one eighty-two. So, maybe broaden the scope of the study, primarily focus on our critical areas here, and then a secondary looking at that interchange from three ninety-five, three ninety-seven, and Highway twelve. That's almost as bad. And then you can take another phase to that, as extending it onto one eighty-two, all the way from twentieth through fourth, because that's, every morning, I see people dynamite the brakes, running on the shoulder of the roads, going in the medium, just to avoid congested traffic and everything else during that whole corridor. But primary focus is where we're having our fatalities and our critical loss of life. Anything that we can do? From a law enforcement perspective, we can't be there all the time. We can't always be in the areas. So, it's got to be a holistic approach. And I appreciate, just briefly looking at the holistic approach to everything. So, asking State Patrol to be able to come in and do emphasis during peak hours and during our commutes and everything else. That's critical, that's needed. But the signages, maybe some lights, looking at alternate aspects of engineering that go in that area is going to be critical, I think. And I would urge, like the Commissioner said, is how can we make this a priority so we don't lose anybody else? Any questions that I can answer, other than just me rambling?
There's, I've been reading on it, trying to understand how some of this happens and works. There's a narrative out there that I've seen on the west side a number of times, that they don't want law enforcement on the road because that causes congestion and causes it. I don't know that that's true in any way, but does emphasis patrols actually help? Does it actually modify long-term behavior, or is it just for the instance while they're visible?
I think it all depends on geographically where you're at. I mean, so, like I said, is, we can't be there all the time, so if we're not going to keep up with it, the pattern of behavior, or especially in that area, because we've got people coming in from different areas. It's not our residents that are, that we need to change their behavior. It's everybody's change of behavior that we need to have. So, emphasis patrols can and do work because you look at areas that we have throughout our jurisdictions, throughout the tri-cities, when they know that there's enforcement that's going to be taking place or emphasis that's going to occur, it changes and modifies behavior. And that's lasting, but then people's behavior goes back to the normal pattern. That area where we've got a ton of commuters that are coming in and out, a ton of visitors that are coming in and out, we're not always going to be able to influence those behaviors unless we do other things, other than just emphasis patrols. But I would agree. My personal belief is emphasis patrols do work. They've got to be strategic, and they can't just be one and done. They've got to be something that's ongoing in order to modify the behavior.
Thank you.
Last Friday, we had a fumigation rig rear-ended on that same roadway. And there was nobody turning on or off, but it was a terrible wreck. Thank God, nobody got hurt. But this big semi ran into the flag car that was behind the fumigation rig and put it into the fumigation rig. And the fumigation rig went over the top of the truck. So, we've got to do something. We need the Washington State Patrol to step up their game and be down there on this highway.
I would agree. That's one piece of it, but I think we need to holistically look at, other than just enforcement action, like you guys addressed in your letter, is looking at it holistically. You could camp a trooper there all day long and people are going to be evil.
He can't be on all stretch of the road. I mean, yeah, he's on the road, but he can't be on every mile of the road.
Exactly.
I was right behind that accident.
Friday?
Friday.
Oh, you were. I was going to show you the picture of it. It's, this truck is just...
Everybody was all locked up. It almost created another accident. I mean, this happened at the Country Mercantile. We had to lock everything up, the semi in front of the same thing, so it almost created another accident. So, we actually went around, went to Glade and went around Sage Moore. When we got to Sage Moore, was another piece of equipment that had about fifteen, ten to fifteen cars backed up and sat there for a good fifteen minutes trying to get across. And we finally ended up coming back to Pasco because he couldn't cross. And so, then we turned east on that Country Mercantile, went around that way and got back on. And it's just, and this isn't even counting all the close calls that we have. Because, I mean, I've traveled that stretch of highway my entire life several times each week. And, you know, back to when it was just two lanes. It's an extremely heavy traffic road, and it's only going to get worse with the added traffic with the semis. But I think, and it's something that's been discussed in years, but it has to become a top priority now to where we look at all the options. And, you know, bypass highway around because as fast as we're growing, the infrastructure is just, it's not keeping up. It's so far behind that it should have been addressed ten, fifteen years ago. So, I think it's going to be an accumulation of all different strategies in order to make that a safer route.
In your comment, Commissioner, exactly, I said that yesterday in a conversation with somebody, is, although we've had our fatalities, you can't count the number of near misses that we've had.
Exactly.
That's, I see it every morning, every evening when I'm going home. So, we've got to be able to look at it in a lot of different ways. So, those could also be fatalities that we're having, just luckily enough, they didn't.
Right.
Thank you. Also, Mr. Chairman, I see our planning director in the room. I don't know if you've got some ideas or ways that we can do this. I believe that the point oh-nine funds, I believe, potentially, I think we'd need to have, kind of vet the process, but I believe that we could do those for some, you know, traffic evaluation as far as what some of that could be used for. I believe that that would qualify for it. So, I don't know if you've got any?
I could add a little bit as well. So, I guess I'll start with a declaration of emergency. So, typically, I mean, we could do that, but I think we need to think about what our end goals are. And typically, I would just start with the fact that an emergency is, oftentimes, it's like unforeseen thing. And this is foreseeable at this point. So, I don't know that it technically would qualify there, but, I mean, think of like a burst water main. That was a lot of times when, and what declaration of an emergency by a local municipality allows you to do is take action immediately, and then you sort of legitimize that later in a meeting. And what it does is it allows you to suspend public bidding laws. Because ordinarily, if a water main broke in your jurisdiction, you'd have to go and do a request for proposals, and they give, you know, like, you don't have time for that. You know, houses are flooding, that sort of thing. So, it allows you to take immediate action and suspend public bidding laws. But I don't think that that gets us there, that solution. But point oh-nine funds could. I know Wes has been working on our capital facilities plan, right? Getting our capital facilities element up to...
So, yeah, there's a couple of thoughts I have related to that. One is there's a transportation element in the comprehensive plan. You also have the economic development element in the comprehensive plan. And we should be looking, of course, I need to get through the update of the comprehensive plan first, but we need to update our economic development plan, which would allow us to better coordinate. You know, transportation is a big piece of the infrastructure here throughout our area. There's a lot of different things we need to work on. You know, I've heard Commissioner talk about turnouts for farm equipment. You know, I've noted that, you know, obviously, we'll note this as we go forward. But it, part of it is bringing all the parties together to the table. You know, this is another place where, you know, at our Metropolitan Transportation District, that should be brought up at the BF Cog. You know, what can we do? This should be an issue that BF Cog is, and our Metropolitan Transit District is looking at and putting some emphasis in besides just the commissioners. So, I would urge, you know, Pasco to send the same kind of a letter. I think we need to get together with Pasco. I can note that when I meet with Pasco and perhaps, you know, Administrator Danzel can can share his concerns with the Administrator of Pasco and help better coordinate some of these efforts because none of us are going to do this on our own. It's going to take all the entities, and we just need to have them at the table. But if we put it in our plans to emphasize that, that helps drive the money in the appropriate spot to deal with the issues.
And the link, the important link with those point oh-nine funds and our Growth Management Act planning process is that we're allowed to use point oh-nine funds if it's a facility listed in our capital facilities element of our... So, that's why it's important to get these projects identified and then put them in that plan so then we can expand those point oh-nine funds on those projects.
Yeah, thank you for that. I would ask that if you would send a letter, prepare a letter for us to sign to BF Cog, Port of Pasco, City of Pasco. And I would like to ask them, formally ask them, to draft and send a letter on their own behalf for a similar, of a similar concern. And, yeah, I would love to see this forwarded to all of our legislators. And then with that, ask them for a response. I would like to have a formal response from the Department of Transportation. We pay our fuel taxes, our fuel taxes went up significantly, and I would like to have an understanding of what their plan is. This is their facility. What is your plan to take care of this facility and operate this facility so that it's not, it's not it's not taking people out of our community in this way?
Commissioner, one last little thing, if I might just add. I think this is something to include our Public Works Director in the discussion. As we do the six-year transportation improvement plan, I realize that's our projects, but I believe there's some mechanism by which he can put an emphasis on those projects, whether or not they're going to, as long as they're on there, even if we don't have a funding mechanism yet, that's a good way to put a light on it, so.
I know that I serve on the BF Cog, and I'll make it well apparent. And I know Commissioner Mullin, you're on Crab. No, is that...
We do not have a seat on the Crab Board.
You haven't seen a Crab Board anymore?
So, my predecessor sat on that board, and I applied for and was not...
Didn't get a seat?
Granted a seat.
Well, we need to reach out to every entity, but first matter is, do I have a consensus with the commissioners that we send this the way?
Absolutely.
And we also share this with all those entities that we, so they have a template to work off of to write their own letter? Because I believe that's a well-drafted letter.
I do too.
Well, yeah, and I was going to say the, pardon me, Mr. Commissioner.
One other thing that I would, we've talked about it just at a high level in the past, but I would like to formally ask that we... Not sure how to say this quite, but Eric Johnson, that's been a consultant for us, is your predecessor as an interim administrator. I think that he grasped the economic development plan that we need to, that we need to put together. And Mr. McCart has his plate completely full. I would like to see us contract with him to design an economic development plan and get that underway as quickly as we can. I see time is of the essence to empower our planning department... Um, I, I see time is of the essence to empower our planning department, get, get this plan stood up. Um, I believe that we need to get this going, um, last week, if we could.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Um, so to make that happen, you'll, it'll just take a board action on the Eric Johnson piece. Um, I did speak with Craig Erdman, um, he was supportive of this letter. Wanted me to pass along that, uh, anything they could do, obviously to work with, uh, any of our partners. The one thing that I would caution you on is I would try to make the federal hi- I would try to make the feds and the state pay for this.
Yeah.
I wouldn't, I would, I would utilize, uh, point oh nine funds and any kind of local funds at the la- because this is, this is a US. Uh, route. This is part of the, this dates back to like Eisenhower. And part of the, part of the promise that was made back then is that, as, for the vote to be able to establish the federal highway system. Is that they would go back and they would do these, uh, periodic reviews when there was growth. And, um, that comes straight, with Jeff and I talk a lot, or Council Briggs and I talk quite a lot about, um. Like in a lot of lawsuits and a lot of cases, they'll go back to the actual floor debates. Uh, for the, at what was spoken of and what was the intent of the law. And I've done that because the highway system's always been kind of an amazing thing to me, that you could wake up in. Pasco, Washington, and if you felt like it, drive to Tampa Bay, Florida and back, just because you can. And that's kind of what makes us different. But there are things like this that I think that we can do. I think these comments have been incredibly helpful. Um, I think the holistic approach also would be the, the way to go. I will absolutely get this out to the port, city. Area, local, local area legislators, anybody else you can think of.
And Franklin Council of Governments.
Cog, uh, it would be a good one. Um, even, e- even some of our folks that might not be, uh, directly in our vicinity. Um, can be really good allies and, and they can be people that, some of the folks that we're sending these letters to, it'll add credibility. They'll go, hey, we've worked with so and so.
Commerce, State Department of Ag, Federal Department of Ag, um, yeah, Crab Board, all, all of those different ones and, and. I, I would like to see us formally ask them or petition them to write their own letter on behalf of. Um, I believe per capita Franklin County is the fastest growing county in the state. Um, and, and. One last component of it, you, you pointed it out, you're right, this is a federal facility. They need to, they need to take care of their facility. And so help, help lead us in that direction of what, what do we need to do to do that? Um, I think, I don't think we can wait any longer. I think it's time to, time to move on this, time to, to take definitive action. And then what, what action would you like to see from this board as far as, um. Having our consultant, uh, begin to prepare an economic development plan?
Uh, so, yeah, there, I would just, uh, a little bit of direction, so kind of scope of what you're talking about. How, uh, um, we are contracted with Mr. Johnson through the end of this year. Um, and so we've already, uh, I've already had, uh, Mr. Johnson. Um, has been working on the, uh, Happo Center and the negotiations that are taking place there. We have talked about the idea of Mr. Johnson taking on the role of, um, uh, starting up the Public Infrastructure Fund. As, as you have, you know, mentioned before, Mr. Johnson's had meetings with folks on our behalf, uh, that have done that in certain other areas of the state. And so really that's a determination that needs to be made by the board of what you, it's kind of what you want to see him, uh, working on. And then we, we'll just have to have another, a different, another, uh, contract that kind of stipulates what the scope and size of the work that he's going to be doing.
So I think that, um, for scoping on that, I think probably Mr. McCart, yourself and myself. Um, and, and potentially Mr. Johnson, if he's willing, sit down and, and kind of craft what, what that may look like. And, and, um, I'm happy to, to have it come before this board and, and, uh, have the conversation and, and, uh, try to petition my. My fellow Commissioners that, that, that we need to go down this path. I think that, uh, that we, that. Franklin County needs this. We need to put a plan in place. I'm really thankful for all the efforts that Mr. McCart's going through to. Um, put our comprehensive plan together and get some of these things going. And, uh, he can't, he can't wear thirty-seven hats, thirty-six probably. I think I've seen him most of them, but, um. I, I think that this is a, this is one where that, I think this is the right path to go down.
If we're looking for a consensus, um, yeah, I think that this should be one of our top priorities. It's something that's been. Addressed over the past few years and it is gonna be a very expensive project, but, um, we either need to look at. How we're gonna manage the growth and. Get traffic moving around Tri-Cities rather than pushing it all right through the very center of the Tri-Cities. I think that, uh. It would raise more awareness too, if people realize just, you know, how much dangerous. Freight is actually coming through downtown Pasco or not downtown Pasco, but the Tri-Cities itself, but, uh, as fast as we're growing, we need to. To figure out a bypass plan and soon, sooner than later.
Gentlemen, it's my strong recommendation, and I bet you that Eric Johnson would agree with this, uh, that we maybe do a workshop. And that you all have a conversation with him about what you'd like to see, uh, performed in the future. Um, he can tell you, uh, whether he wants to take that on or not, uh, and like what. And one of the reasons I say that is because I think that, uh, what both of you gentlemen are saying is accurate. But I, it could possibly be that you're, uh, we're talking about a public infrastructure fund and then also the traffic issue. I just wanna make sure that we're, the scope isn't so, you know, open that we're setting Mr. Johnson up for failure or our sales up for failure. Because we haven't clearly defined the scope and role, so. I don't know if you're open to that recommendation of having a workshop. Would that be okay?
Yeah, in fact, I would, uh, I would encourage that, but I would also like to say that let's get this ball rolling first. Let's get these letters sent. Let's put the pressure on the State Patrol to get more units on that roadway. Uh, maybe even a bird in the air, you know, they've got those drones now, they can be flying too. There, there's more they can be doing and they're not. Also, I'd like to put the emphasis on seventeen and our state highway system. That we also put the pressure on them for seventeen, for turnouts for equipment. We should be using our point oh nine funds for Glade and sixty-eight. I'd like to focus our safety issues on our roads we can take control of. That's a federal highway, that's a state highway. They need to take care of that and we need to put pressure on them. Let's take of, care of our business and that is Glade and sixty-eight.
So what I've got down is we're gonna move forward with this. I'm gonna send it to everybody that I've already mentioned, include. The port, the city, Benton Franklin Cog, USDA, Washington State Department of Agriculture, local area legislators and then. Um, also, uh. Sidebar, we're gonna have a workshop with Eric Johnson. That's what I've got out of the, all right, thank you very much.
Okay. Alrighty, thank you. That'll take us down to Commissioner Administrator updates. Mr. Administrator, Mr. Danzel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and, uh, members of the board. Um, I wanted to wish you all a happy Thanksgiving. I wanna wish everybody in the county a happy Thanksgiving. Um, it's, uh, I'll tell you one thing I'm thankful for is being here. I think that there is just an incredible amount of talent and, and, uh, and people that, uh. They all kind of pull in the same direction and it's been really, uh, it's been fun and exciting for me to be able to work for. You gentlemen as well, so just wanted to say thank you and I'm thankful for that. I've been thankful to work with, uh, folks like Council Briggs and all the people that are, you know, pretty much sitting in the, uh, audience right now. Um, uh, it's been fun to get to know people and get to know their personalities. Um, this last week, as you all, I think are pretty aware. Um, I've worked pretty extensively with Tim Anderson regarding the budget. Um, I sat down with a couple of meetings with, uh, uh, Michael Namcheck, uh, discussed some of the IIS issues. But, um, I'm always the first to admit that I recommended, uh, and I have for a couple of weeks now, that if folks need to get. To their families, that they get to their families and enjoy Thanksgiving, cause it's, it's my favorite holiday, to be honest with you. Um, been working a lot of this, a lot of this stuff, a lot of, uh, going back and forth and correspondence and we'll have some more correspondence, uh. Uh, in coming weeks too, but, uh, really, uh, I've just been working on the budget and trying to figure out how we're gonna try to make ends meet. Come the fifth of December. So that's what I've been working on. And then, uh, I'll finally, I'll end it by just saying that, uh, I have to give a shameless plug for it because he's my favorite all time, but. I've already watched Planes, Trains and Automobiles and, uh. Uh, so Thanksgiving season's already begun for me. Thank you. And let me know if there's anything I can be working on.
Thank you. Mr. Bowman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, thank you for allowing our chaplain to pray for us. I have a particular reason to be thankful today. Um, my wife has been having some medical challenges and we found out last evening that she does not have cancer. And I am very thankful for that. So thank you for, um, letting our chaplain share with us a prayer of Thanksgiving. Um, this last week, went to a extended meeting at Ben Franklin Transit about long-range planning. About what does the next six to ten to twenty years look like and. Um, meeting with staff about all the efforts that are undergoing there and some of the criteria that they are required to. Undergo, um, had multiple meetings at the Happo Center, um, just, um, really appreciate. Um, the HWL team there and all the efforts that they're going through. Um, a couple of things of particular interest, um, they've been. Um, as we a- approach the winter time, they've been, um, cleaning up the exterior and just getting it ready and. Finishing some of the, the outside work, doing, doing, you know, cleaning dead trees. That kind of stuff and just really appreciate that. Something else that I've been working on, I've talked to our Administrator about. Is the Track Center slash Happo Center had an asset inventory process. And I've been able to identify, um, just through the range of numbers that there's, um. You know, a thousand or more different asset tags that were affixed to things and trying to understand where do we go from here as we try to. Modernize and bring that into, um, into. Up to date, so to speak. And so how do we do that? They're saving stuff, you know, broken tables and things that have no value and. And they're not sure how to dispose of it, so been working with our Administrator and, and we'll, we'll figure out a path forward that, that, uh, may have to come before this board. Authorizing, uh, disposal of, of stuff that, a, a bunch of it will, will literally have to go into a dumpster, cause it, it has no value, so. Anyway, spent a lot of time there, just really appreciate Mike and his team, Chuck, um, and all the work that they're going through. Um, from stuff as simple as, as broken faceplates on a, on an outlet on the wall, all the way to. Um, you know, repairing a flagpole and cleaning, cleaning parking lots and, uh, thankful that we sent a. Sent a letter to the, our neighboring property owner out there, um, I think yesterday that there was, uh, eight semis in our parking lot. And when those semis are in that parking lot doing, doing, uh, you know, tight turns, it's tearing up our, our newly resurfaced area. And so we need to get that parking lot, uh, likely posted shortly. Um, for no parking for, uh, big semis. It's just, it's gonna tear our parking lot up that we just repo- repaired. Um, meetings through the last week with Corrections, our Administrator, District Court. Uh, multiple different, different, uh, facilities and, and, uh, just lots of, lots of meetings and phone calls. Uh, Pasco City Council meeting. Um, we've talked about, uh, the accidents on three ninety-five, um. Talking about Eric Johnson, um, and then. I believe that, uh, we've been getting more efficient with our meetings and I would like to see us reduce our meetings in December. Um, there's actually five Wednesdays in December and two of those, um, fall on holidays, the twenty-fourth and the thirty-first. I would like to see us do, um, reduce the other two meetings to, um. Likely December third and December seventeenth. And, uh, we would skip this, the tenth, the twenty-fourth and the thirty-first, which are also Wednesdays, Wednesdays, but are also, uh, holidays. So, um, with that, that'll be my report.
Commissioner Mullin.
Well, like we discussed earlier, I think that the, um. Three ninety-five north and south is, has got to be addressed and, and like I said, the different, um, avenues that we may have. And as far as maybe lowering the speed limit, um, another crossing across the Columbia, these are all. Like I said, it's gonna be an expensive. Outlay of funds to try to get this addressed, but, um, it is, we're growing so fast that it needs to be addressed and. Like I said, it should have been done. Some time ago. I see that we have a certificate of appreciation coming up here, um. Or. Oh, the, um. For Denisha. I just wanna say that I remember when she first started. And I'm like asking myself, who's gonna help me now? Cause she has always done a great job. Always very friendly, very professional and it's, uh, it's gonna be quite a loss and we wish you all the best in. In your future endeavors, but, um. Gonna miss you, so, yeah. Um, other than that, I think that, um, just wanna wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving week and enjoy the time with your families, so. Mr. Bowman made a comment about, um. Shortening the meetings for the month of December. I guess we just have to address how we're gonna get the bills paid.
Yes.
Uh, in a timely manner, so. That's the only concern I see. Other than that, I'm, I'm good with that comment, so.
I do believe that we've accounted for that with the resolution that we passed that allows the, the. The bills to be paid in advance of a Commissioners meeting, should we have two meetings that fall on a. Fall on holidays, so I do believe that's already been addressed, but, um.
Yeah, it's the only major concern I would see that, that.
Mr. Danzel.
Thought out, so.
Do you have a response to that?
If you gentlemen would like to proceed this way, I can talk with the Auditor's Office, but I'm certain that there's a way that we can proceed forward with that.
Thank you.
That concludes my report.
Well, Denisha, I wanna say thank you too, but she's not going very far. You can go over to Westside Auto now and do your business over there. But I wanna thank you for all your w- work here at the courthouse and. And I believe it was your mother that worked here too, correct? But I'd love. Yeah, I, I loved her too. I mean, she, I remember my dad and her cutting it up when they, when he used to come in to get his license. Refresh me of her name? Yes, a great lady, great lady. So my report is the Columbia River Counties Caucus. Where the Department of Ecology was really prevalent in, in their actions and stuff, listening in on the meeting, Columbia Basin Sustainable Water. Uh, Executive Meeting, Columbia Basin Sustainable Water Stakeholder Meeting, Ben Franklin Council of Governments, which. Now this is all transpired. We really need to reach out to them with, uh. Pre-certification election and then the certification of the election. I just wanna say a big thank you to the girls down there. That are doing an incredible job and they make it so fun to participating in that, when it can be so grueling. What, you know, doing the signature match and, and, uh, but they do a fantastic job. I just wanna give them a shout out and say thank you for everything you've done. Uh, the agenda meeting. And then the de- and then the budget meeting we had yesterday, which was very alarming where. We found out that we're now five hundred, over five hundred thousand dollars behind on our sales tax collection. Very alarming and it's making it even more difficult to set our budget for twenty-six. Just gonna warn the other Commissioners that it is really becoming, uh, evident that we're gonna have to make some hard decisions. Because, uh, it is really getting tight, uh, and then we're also facing more costs with OPD because of the state mandates. Uh, Mr. Danzel, is there anything you wanna throw in there on that, please? We just got a lot facing us.
I appreciate that. I, I have received an additional request from, uh, Larry Ziegler. Um, to be able to bring on, uh, another attorney. Uh, Mr. Ziegler has indicated, and OPD has indicated. I think that the judges would be open for too, but that the, maybe the thing to do. Moving forward, instead of everybody just flying kind of blindly into this new, uh, great new world that we have to live under the. The caseload mandates, that we get the Prosecutor's Office together, the Judges, OPD and the Commissioners and figure out a way that we can best do this. That is manageable and that doesn't break the county, that doesn't, uh, deny anybody their rights, but that also. Is, uh, prudent in the way that we do this. We've, uh, seen other areas. That, uh, have bit off more than they can chew and there's a pretty huge difference in their, uh, in their budget and where they, uh, are right now in their cash flow, so. Uh, I say all that just to say that I think that it's something to take seriously and that, uh, uh, Mr. Ziegler did ask for, um, an additional. an additional, the ability to hire an additional attorney to help deal with some of this caseload management.
Thank you. And then I just received a electronic message here from a constituent that said, "Thank you for addressing this. Let me know if there's anything I can do to help engage the community on this issue regarding 395." It's something that keeps all of our families and my neighbors up at night. It's a death trap. Everybody knows it. Now, we just got to get the feds to realize it and fix it and same thing with the state on 17 and Highway 12 down here that's very dangerous. The last thing I'd like to ask everybody on this Thanksgiving, I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and please enjoy the time with your family. It's the most precious gift to God. There's a young man I coached, Stephen Martinez. If you will pray for him. He's going through a tough battle right now. That's the end of my report. Open it up for public comment.
Mr. Chairman, if you're okay, make a couple of comments.
Oh, I missed correspondence, but yes, please, Mr. Valan.
Couple of different things. Stephen Martinez is a remarkable young man, from a very large family. I see him as a, his dad and his uncles as brothers and he's a remarkable young man. He's 38 years old and he's battling cancer and he definitely needs our prayers. For the Franklin County family, those that work for Franklin County, just to give you a little bit more context to what Commissioner Didier spoke about, we received an invoice yesterday that our liability insurance for Franklin County is going up 55% and that number equates to $680,000 that we did not account for in our preparation for the budget. And so, that is a, that is very, very hard to swallow. That's real money and that's a check we have to write by the end of January. And so, I don't know how we do that. I don't know what the process is because I know that we've been working diligently trying to prepare for and get ready for our budget workshops next week. And so, like Commissioner Didier said, there's some very, very difficult decisions that we are going to have to make over the next week. And so, I would also ask, based on what you said, as I thought about this, but I forgot to write it down, but I wrote it down now, I would like to see us, it may not work on a Wednesday, we may have to do this on a different day, but I would like to see a workshop where we ask the PA's office, the Office of Public Defense and our judges to come and we just have a roundtable. Obviously, we have to have this in an open public setting and it would probably be a little bit different. The look of the workshop would be a little bit different, but I would like to see us have that conversation. How do we do this? Because if we don't, if we don't make proactive decisions, the state is going to make the decisions and we're going to have to live with it. And so, I would like to see us get together with those, that group of stakeholders and have the tough conversation and say, "How do we do this?" And I think all those people need to be at the table. And thank you, Mr. Chairman, for letting me share.
Absolutely. And I went over correspondence. Mr. Danzel, I think you have an appreciation paper here to read?
Yes, I have an acknowledgement of exceptional and dedicated service from the county auditor, Mr. Chairman and Board of Commissioners. Would it be appropriate for me to read that into the record?
Please. And would you please come forward and as our administrator reads this?
All right. Thank you. Acknowledgement of exceptional and dedicated service, Denisia Tomes, Department of Licensing Lead. Dear Commissioners, we are writing to formally acknowledge and recognize the distinguished career of Denisia Tomes, who will conclude her service to the county on Wednesday, November 26, 2025, as she embarks on a new chapter in her life. Denisia began her tenure on January 14, 2003 and has since provided more than 20 years of outstanding commitment and expertise. Notably, her career with the county has been spent within the auditor's office. We could always count on Denisia to be here and on time, making her deep institutional knowledge, consistency and work ethic and valuable assets to the Department of Licensing and the public we serve. Her longstanding dedication is a testament to her commitment to public service. We extend our gratitude for her substantial contributions over the past two decades. Commissioners, please join us in wishing Denisia the very best for her new journey and future endeavors. She will be greatly missed by her colleagues in the auditor's office and across the county. Respectfully submitted, Matt Beaton, Franklin County Auditor. Thank you so much.
Commissioners?
Thank you so much for your dedicated service to Franklin County. You will certainly be missed.
Thank you.
Thank you. I brought it up in the public, in our correspondence for the, our reports just because it's just hard to say with one opportunity, what a great job you've done and always left that department with a smile on my face because of your outstanding service and commitment to customers. I do appreciate it. You're going to be extremely missed, but at least you'll be close by. So, you'll probably get more calls from me. But no, it's, it seems like it was just the other day that you started and when Mr. Danzel says it's been 20 years, it's like, wow. Thank you. And I do wish you all the best and we'll still see each other.
Oh, definitely. Yeah, you and your brother, no big deal.
All right.
Just want to say ditto's to that and I want to thank you again for all you've done for Franklin County. You have brightened this courthouse and now you'll brighten Westside Auto.
Yes, thank you guys.
They are very fortunate to have you.
Yes. Thank you.
Great. It's been great.
Would you like to say something?
Yeah. I have been here a long time. It goes by pretty quick, but I gained a lot of knowledge from the very beginning. I didn't know too much when I first started, but like I said, you work with the public, that's always fun. Get some good ones, get some bad ones, but you learn all the same throughout all of them. Gain experience, you learn how to deal with people and at the end of the day, everybody just wants to get their stuff done. So, just go that extra mile when you can, but I have appreciated my time here. It's been great. Like I said, I'm not going too far, but just a new chapter. So, I appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
We'll be to see, we'll be over there to see you.
On a constant basis. No, thank you.
All right. Now, we move down to, yes, Mr. Danzel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had the young lady that wrote us last week.
Yes.
Right. And so, I have a return letter to her. Now, this isn't everything, but I've got, everybody participated. So, it started off as a small kind of exercise in trying to find all the different, you know, departments that would want to participate. We've got now like a problem. We've got too much stuff to send. I think we're going to have to send , right, a box instead of an envelope, but this is the letter that responds to that outstanding young lady. If you wanted to give it a look over and maybe your signature. And that's the last correspondence that we, that we have.
No, and I want to thank you very much for doing that because you may be creating the next leader in this great United States of America. I think that's excellent that we are corresponding with her and sending back some good stuff. All right. Now, it takes us down to public comment. Is there anybody for public comment? Anybody on the phone? Any need for an executive session?
No.
Oh, is there?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Yeah, there, a need for a brief, I'd say a 15-minute executive session for potential litigation.
Okay. And the people that are needing to be in the room?
The people that will need to be in the room are Council Briggs, the chairman, Commissioner Valan, Commissioner Mullen and myself.
Okay.
Thank you.
For 15 minutes. So, at this time, we're going to stay in this room. We will recess at 9:57 and be out at 12, 10:12.
We have come out of executive session with the need to extend the exec executive session for another 15 minutes, so we'll go in at 11:50 or 10:12 and we'll come out at 10:27.
We have come out of executive session with the need to extend the exec executive session for another 15 minutes, so we'll go in at 11:50 or 10:12 and we'll come out at 10:27.
We have come out of executive sessions and we are back to regular session. Is there any other business for the good of the county?
I believe there is, Mr. Chairman. I would move that we amend the agenda to add two potential action items.
We have a motion, a second, to amend the agenda to add two action items.
Want to take the vote or just go?
All in favor say aye.
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 So, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we instruct our administrator to enter communications with Martin Hall about the potential of housing Franklin County's juvenile offenders.
Second.
There's been motion, a second, to give Mr. Danzil, our administrator, to enter into discussions with Martin Hall for our juvenile detainees. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And also, second item, I would move that we delegate authority to our administrator to work with our Public Works and a vendor and to find a remedy to the issue, whereas we have five vehicles in our possession that were purchased that are above the budgeted and approved amount of $350,000 and to work with our Public Works and our vendor to find a resolution to this issue.
Second.
There've been motion, a second, to give administrator Mr. Danzil the authority to work with the vendor and Public Works on five vehicles that were purchased that are above the recommended $350,000 purchase limit. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there any other business for the good of the county? Hearing none, is there, this meeting is adjourned.